All right, I'm gonna get us started. It is 7 o'clock, and I'll call the meeting of the Silver Falls School District Board of Directors to order. And we have five of us are present, so we have enough to conduct business. Next on the agenda is the rev-- well, next is the Agenda Review. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the agenda as published.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as published. The next thing on our list is the complaint/appeal, and we have--
Do you want to vote on the agenda?
Oh, yeah, yeah, thank you. That's why I keep you guys around. That's right, yeah. Let's vote on the agenda.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Owen?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
All in favor?
All right, and Lori's coming. Okay, next, we have the complaint/appeal, and we have visiting with us Jolly Patterson, our attorney who's gonna counsel us on the complaint. Hi, Jolly, thank you for joining us.
Do you like me to introduce this?
Yes, please.
Okay, okay. So, the board-- and I'm hearing a little bit of echo, so I hope that's not challenging on your end.
No, we're good.
No, it's gonna just be on your end, Jolly, so hopefully you can deal with that.
Got it. So, as I believe the board has received information, a parent filed a complaint under KLAR, a complaint related to some practices at one of the schools that raised concerns for the parent about both some safety concerns and the response of employees at the principal at the school. The complaint was handled under the KLAR, which is the, as you know, the board's policy and process for addressing complaints. The superintendent delegated the response, which came from Mr. Bush, to the parent, and the parent has now asked for the board to review that decision as the board-- as the parent is permitted under the policy to do. That doesn't require the board to accept the appeal. The word "appeal" isn't used in the policy, but essentially, we would treat this as an appeal. And there are sort of two components here. One is the person-- the issue about personnel. And personnel decisions are within the responsibility and purview of the superintendent, and having the board review specific personnel decisions made by the superintendent can create significant legal risk for the district. The superintendent is charged with following the very specific employment laws that can apply when there are allegations against staff. There's both, there's federal law that can apply, state law that can come into play, and certainly in some situations, collective bargaining agreements and other rules. And so, the superintendent has the authority and expertise, along with his staff, to essentially carry out all the personnel issues that come into play when there's a complaint about staff, and that's what occurred here. If the board was essentially kind of almost second-guessing those decisions or reviewing and substituting its own decisions for those of the superintendent, that could-- that, as I indicated before, could create a variety of legal risk and questions from staff, and certainly challenges from staff, about whether that was fair. So, in-- it is generally our advice that the board shouldn't review specific decisions that are made about employment matters, and that that's outside the purview of the board's policy role. But the board's policy role does encompass a discussion, if the board would like, of some of the policy issues that were raised by the complaint. So, I'm certainly happy to answer any questions about that. I would caution the board that just because this does have-- this complaint is both about a student-related issue and about personnel, we should keep our conversation very general in nature, so as to not identify anybody in particular, or potentially violate any privacy or confidentiality rules. But I'm happy to answer any questions that the board has about that.
I have one, that's okay. So, I'm curious, your statement about if we were to review it, it would open us up to some risk, and that's not-- that's-- you would recommend we not do that. And I guess for clarification, we do have a policy KLAR that allows complaints to come to the board. So, I just wanna make sure I understand, there would be other cases then, aside from, say, employment-- those involving employment law, where we could review them, correct? Because if there were none, then I would say, why do we have a policy in place? So, I just wanna make sure it's because it's personnel-related, okay?
Absolutely, absolutely. And the board has a very important role, I think, in reviewing complaints that do raise more policy or practice-related issues. But there are-- and so, that's the distinction that boards make when they look at each individual complaint. Is this something that's sort of within the board's policy role to review and maybe take on as wanting more information, or more policy review? Or is it really something that is within the superintendent's area of responsibility?
Thank you.
Any other questions here? So, Jolly, check my thinking on this. So, you're cautioning us against discussing the personnel-related matters that have been raised. However, the practice-related issue, we are able to discuss. And so, one of the things that I'm wondering about is what has been our practice around safety protocol? And I think Dan has prepared some information for us tonight, for us to hear, and we can-- that's something that we are free to talk about.
Yes.
Yeah, so, in regards to restroom protocols, I've outlined a few areas that staff and administration take into consideration when establishing restroom protocols, and then also finalize or finishing that with, you know, what role do parents and students play in, and how we apply those protocols. So, I-- the three areas that I-- I kind of sub-boloted these into is, one is easy and immediate access, student responsibility, and student privacy. And so, under ease and immediate access, which really means to making sure that protocols are not overly burdensome for students, so that a student in immediate need of the restroom-- you know, if a student was in immediate need of the restroom, being required to wait, or worst case, being denied access creates both a health risk and the potential for accidents. So, that's one thing to take into consideration. The other aspect is student responsibility plays a significant role in making sure that students are able to manage their responsibilities, so that they can have easy access to the restrooms. And so, when we have incidents of, whether it be vandalism or inappropriate behavior, you know, that will cause a school to reconsider or consider reducing access to the restrooms. And this might include, you know, limiting the number of students able to leave a classroom at any given time, or reducing the number of restrooms that are available to students. When we create these, you know, when we reduce access, in many cases, these limitations are applied for a short time until expectations are re-taught, and then trying to return to having an easier access to the restroom. And then finally, the other thing to take into consideration is student privacy in restroom protocols, because supervision within the restroom is very limited, and in most cases, students are able to manage themselves, their individual restroom access. And then, one thing to take into consideration is the less structured time periods, like lunch or recess, where supervision is more out in the playgrounds and everything, but that's also a time that we encourage students to use the restroom, so they're not disrupting class and stuff like that. So, there's a lot of different factors at play there. And then, I think the other component to this is then parental involvement. And so, whenever we're trying to balance the access issue with also, you know, student responsibility, when we make changes, it's important to involve parents, so that they understand that there may be a reduced access. So, if we have to close restrooms because of vandalism or inappropriate behavior, that parents understand why there may be a reduction in that. And so, administrators have and should notify parents when tighter restrictions are in place, so that may result in the number of students being allowed to leave class at a time, for an example, is reduced. They understand that easy access to the restrooms may, for a time, be reduced. So, those are the different factors that our schools take into place, and I think the important part, too, is the feedback from parents and from students, you know, in that process of trying to balance all those different things, so.
Questions about that bit?
One popped into my head. I should've looked before I came, I actually didn't even think about it. Do we have board policy around this issue, or is this all just sort of what I'll call administrative implementation within the buildings?
It's more-- it's just practices.
Okay.
As far as, we don't have policies per se, but just, you know, having, you know, protocols and building-- and how we teach expectations, too. You know, if you go for our younger schools that have, you know, those PBIS components, is what does safe and respectful and responsible restroom youths look like?
Right, okay.
Yeah, and that was something that we, before planning this agenda item, talked about, you know, what is the board's role? And it-- ours is obviously limited, but we wanna be responsive to the complaint, because it's a, you know, it's a good time to review practices, and so, we wanna make sure that folks know that we are aware and are in touch with our administration about the issue.
I have a question. In the information that I read, there seemed to be a time span there that she-- that the individual referenced, and so, was there-- I don't know if I can ask this, so let me know if I can, or can't. Who's better than this? There was a timeframe referenced in that email, and so, do we know if there were things in motion as far as--
I would probably need more specific example from that, and I think that that would start, you know, lending towards more of the personnel aspect of the decision, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. One way to maybe discuss the question is, are there best practices around addressing, you know, concerns or communication? And so, maybe that's a way to ask a question that doesn't identify this situation, or get into this particular situation, but what are some best practices that the administration may be working on? I don't know if that's helpful, but that can be-- that can be one way that the board sort of stays in its-- in a policy role, and without violating the confidentiality-- some of the confidentiality issues.
Yeah, I think from any time that there's an opportunity to involve parents in decision-making and things involving the school, I think that's always best practice to include parents as soon as possible.
One of the challenges with this type of an issue is the sort of catch-22 elements in play, right?
Yeah.
This had to do with bathroom release policies, I think I can say that much, right? That's what we're talking about. And, you know, on one hand, you're not gonna put security cameras in the bathrooms, for obvious reasons. On the other hand, when there's kids in the bathroom, you don't quite know what's gonna happen all the time. I don't know, it sort of seems like a lose-lose proposition, almost, like, there's really not-- other than trying to teach kids how to properly behave, as Dan was alluding, right, as an opportunity, just like anywhere else in the school, things can happen that oughtn't, and we just need to figure out how to address it and make them teaching moments, I guess. I don't know, that's sort of where my head's at on this. I don't know that something screams at me as being policy-related, from everything that I've seen or read, I guess.
I think the one thing that-- the only policy that really relates here is the KLAR. Was the policy followed, were the steps followed? So, that was-- I mean, that's really, to me, the one thing that we can hang our hat on to say yes or no.
Right.
Has this individual been reached out to, and had anything discussed with them to answer their concerns, I guess? That would be a question, since it feels like our role is very limited.
I've been in communication with the complainant.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I agree with you. I mean, if we don't have any other policies in place that would have dictated different procedures around this incident in particular, then sort of the limit of our authority is, was KLAR followed?
Mm-hmm.
Because everything else is administrative, it's up to the discretion of decision-makers in the administration, so if I'm understanding that correctly, yeah.
Yep.
And it sounds like other people have been reached out to as well.
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah, there were just a few things that concerned me, as far as the time lapse, and also other, I guess, entities or individuals that were reached out to, that jumped out at me, but I guess that does not fall under the role of the board, then.
So, Dan's response was that staff ensured that the actions were taken to establish appropriate safety protocols for the students. That's really what we are, you know, what we are putting our stamp of approval on, saying, yes, we uphold the superintendent's decision, or something else. And the only other thing that I can think of is that we would want more information on bathroom protocols, but Dan's provided quite a bit tonight, so we-- and Jolly, correct me if I'm wrong, we really, we need to either affirm or not affirm the superintendent's decision on this?
Right. Generally, so to say that the board shall decide in 20 days-- within 20 days of open session, what action, if any, is warranted, and then a final decision regarding the complaint shall be issued by the board within 10 days, which we can assist with, which is essentially just the board's discussion now, and then a vote. Generally, a motion or resolution could be something along the lines of, the board has discussed the complaint, accepts the superintendent's determination, and will take no further action, or something along those lines, if the board doesn't want more policy reporting back.
I mean, from my own perspective, I don't know what I would want back, right? My impression is that we followed KLAR, that we communicated with the complainant, we communicated with appropriate everybody else, I guess, that might've been involved. We did those things. And so, really, the-- for me, the only option on the table personally is to affirm the decision. I don't feel like there is anything else that I'm hearing that we would do, or could even hardly do, short of risking, as Jolly was alluding to, treading into some unfavorable waters, so.
Yeah, I'm curious, Jolly, like, how does one have that conversation? I mean, if we decided, you know, we've received a few pieces of information--
Yeah.
--we have some more in-depth questions that we can't ask here, in this forum, about policies and procedures, how does one-- how do we-- how would we go about doing that? And again, I don't also don't want us to leak into conversation where we are, you know, relitigating-- excuse me, relitigating that decision, right? Because that would be in a different process.
Right, right. No, it's a great question. So, if the board did want to hear a complaint against a staff, a member of the staff, there is an option to have an executive session. So, you'd have to give notice to that person that you were going to formally accept and hear the complaint, then you would hear the complaint in executive session, and then you'd have to vote on how you were gonna handle that complaint against that individual in an open meeting. But, so, that's how you could proceed if that were to happen. If it were a question about the specific nature of the students who were involved in this situation, or any student-facing information, student discipline, student, you know, student structure issues, we could-- the board can always have an executive session to discuss those issues, because those would-- those are documents and information that's protected under FERPA, so that could also be the basis for an executive session. Or if the board is asking policy-related questions about this complaint or anything else, then that can be done in open session, as you have been doing today.
So, do the-- to those two former, the executive sessions that you mentioned, does that mean that we've accepted the process of review? Does having those executive sessions then become an added review? Do they--
Yes, so--
Because you're cautioned against that, so I just wanna make sure that we would know what we were stepping into.
Right. So, if the board were to decide today, for instance, that it wanted to accept and hear the complaint, so by "accept," I just mean that it would take further action, not that it was agreeing with. But if the board were to decide today that it wanted to hear the complaint against the staff person, then the board would essentially vote on that, that the board is choosing to hear the complaint. It wouldn't hear that tonight. That would then start a process where we would need to give that individual the notice that the board had accepted, or that-- I wanna be careful about the word "accept," that the board was hearing a complaint against that staff person, and that that staff person could either-- would choose to have that hearing in open session or executive session, and then we would structure a-- an executive session hearing where both sides would present and things like that, and then the board would have deliberation about that, and then vote in open session. So, taking it outside of this situation, for instance, if there was a complaint against a teacher, that the teacher had failed to, you know, fully implement district policy, or was not an effective teacher, and for some reason, the board decided it was gonna hear that complaint through the KLAR process, even though that-- so, let's say first, that that complaint had been fully handled prior to it coming to the board, through the district's processes, and the process that's allowed under the collective bargaining agreement, but that the individual then appealed all the way up to the board, and the board decided to hear it, then there would be a hearing, that teacher could be present, the administration could put on its case, you know, it's a very complex kind of process--
Yeah.
--and then the board would vote, so.
Okay. Now, that's really helpful, thank you, I appreciate that.
For clarity, this is a complaint not against policy, but against an individual, correct?
An individual, yeah.
It is, although I want--
Go ahead, if you were gonna answer.
Oh, I-- so, the remedy that the complainant is asking for is employment action against a complainant. I mean, I'm sorry, employment action against a-- an employee. But I think it's-- so, yes, but it's also, I think, important, when the board sees complaints, to also identify that there may be policy issues that the board-- that is within the board's role to evaluate and see, is this, you know, is this something that we should be paying more attention to? Is this something-- is this something that requires more board attention? Is there a trend here of concerns that maybe need the board's focus? And so, just in the board's discussion tonight about the bathroom protocols, and safety protocols, and responsiveness, and that sort of thing, that's how the-- that's how I think the board effectively addresses its role in relation to complaints like this.
Right, okay.
I wouldn't mind knowing the protocol within the scope of using the restroom and stuff, just in a little more detail, but I just hope that the individual who stepped forward on this also knows, too. But as far as the personnel aspect, I don't know how that would even be a part of it for us.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm guessing that the actual policy will vary by school, and even maybe--
Yeah.
--grade levels within school. I mean, like, it can vary tremendously, depending on--
On the age and--
And down to individual students.
Right, all the way down to individual students, yeah, right.
All right, so, I think everybody seems to understand the limitations that we have around this complaint, and I'm willing to entertain motions at this point.
Well, I move that we affirm the superintendent's decision regarding the outcome of this particular complaint. Is that worded properly?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the board affirm the administration's-- what was the word you used?
Decision.
Decision around-- a decision on this complaint. We will vote?
Jonathan?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Lori?
Um, oh, I'm struggling, I'm gonna say no.
She said no.
Owen?
Yes.
Janet?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Majority.
All right, so, that ends the complaint/appeal item. We will now move to the policy-first reads, and Dan, did you-- were you gonna introduce those to us?
I could. I just wanted to say, Jolly, I think--
I'm gonna sign off.
Oh, yeah, sorry, Jolly.
No, it was a pleasure seeing you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, we're trying to get restarted with policies up, coming up for first reads during our work session, so that we kind of get back into the rhythm of having, again, first reads, second reads, third reads. And so, you can see that the structure's slightly different in what's in front of you. Debbie is still putting together a cover sheet for you, and then, instead of multiple other attachments, the order is-- it's all one attachment, where you can see the OSBA revisions there with the strikeouts, and then what would become the final policy, and then if you wanted to go down, you could take a look at the existing policy. So, we just have-- really, all of these are fairly-- we just wanted to get our bearings back on doing this, and so, these are all fairly easy policies. And so, there were some minor OSBA revisions on Policy DBEA, the Budget Committee, and so, there's not a whole lot of substance there, but just wanted to, if you have any most of these are-- were related to statute changes, or just recommendations from OSBA, so.
Thank you, Dan.
Yeah, and then, the next one was really just a kind of a restructuring of the lost coverage piece, and so, some of that's just a rewording, but all of it got changed-- or reorganized, I guess I should say. And I think with the workplace harassment, it was just some footnotes that got changed with updated legislation. that got changed with updated legislation. And then and then with what used to be femla, or femla ofla is now just, we're just calling, OSBA is recommending just call it family leave. And there are some definition changes in there, but it's just to be updated with the law.
Right.
And then, as you're probably aware, we have a new paid family medical leave, paid leave Oregon. And so we wanted to get this policy up in front of you, but we will be working on ARs, which will be where this thing, where we'll figure out how we're going to do this. Both of those will be needing to be probably bargained with our collective bargaining, with our associations. We are currently bargaining with classified, as you know, so some of the aspects of the AR will have to kind of wade through that process. And then I'm not sure about SFBA, if they will demand to bargain the impacts of paid leave Oregon.
And they have the right to demand a bargain because it's a change in working conditions?
Yes, or a change, well, it has an economic impact.
Economic impact, yeah. Anybody have questions about the specifics about these policy changes?
No, I appreciated the format, it was really easy to wade through.
That was the most important feedback I wanted, is whether the format.
The one is great, yeah, it's super easy.
So huge shout out to Derek McElfresh, who's kind of taken the lead on this. And so Derek's kind of the organizer with Derek and Debbie, so.
Very good.
And as I think I said to you in an email, once we get our new board members in July, we would take a volunteer or two from the board to serve on that. I think that would be very helpful.
All right, well, that's the first read. And we'll have two more opportunities for the public to also weigh in. And if we don't have any further discussion around this, I think it's our last agenda item. And with no objections, meaning adjourned.